Do whatever you want.
Exactly.
Waste water treatment facility.
I realized.
You're getting silly.
You said they were gonna be silly tonight, you were right.
No, it's been a long day and they had a long night. And I, dang, it's like blurring, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, no, I stayed up.
They weren't finished at eight thirty?
I see, at eight thirty, they had reported, they had reported at nine.
I know, I was like, what?
When I went to bed and one person was winning and then we woke up and everything was dead.
Then I looked up their population and I said, oh.
I didn't go there this time.
Eight thirty, we were still pulling ballots out.
Hello, everyone, will you please join us for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to declare the public hearing open for the general assistance appendices. Do we have any comment? No? Seeing none, then I will declare this public hearing closed. Uh, the meeting, we do not have the minutes, correct?
Correct, and can we do a couple of adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, you do not have a problem with that?
Yeah, you do, so I have two things, I'd like to add six point three to vote on the general, and the general, what is it, the general assistance ordinance appendices.
Oh, great, okay.
And then I have six point four to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to include a vote on the general assistance appendices and to accept a donation in the amount of, how much was it?
One thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
To accept a donation of one thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is it nineteen?
Yes, one four one nine point three four.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
That's great.
Thank you.
As we do not have the minutes, well, we don't, it's not on the agendas, is that just a, alright. So, on to new business, we have the wastewater treatment facility update.
So, Carrie told me you would like an update on where we are with the finances for the wastewater treatment facility. We've been working of late, as you know, you've signed, closed on the O six loan a couple of weeks ago. Trying to put it all together in something that you could understand and the more that I tried to do it, the worse it got. I apologize, but I'll just kind of go through this table that I've given you. In the first column, under source, those are all the sources of funds that we have for this project. The next column, total funding, that's how much money is coming from each of those sources to the left of that. The next column of the total funding, that's the amount that we're paying in loan from the original total funding amount. The next column, PF stands for principal forgiveness or grant. That is the amount of grant or principal forgiveness that we'll be receiving on this project. The next column, YTD, is yet to date expended. That shows how much has been expended from each of those different loans or principal forgiveness or grants or bonds, et cetera. The next column is the balance, that's what we have for balance remaining in each of those accounts. The next one is whether or not we've closed on that loan yet, in other words, have we used it all or has time gone by long enough, like with the IRD loan, we had to close on that after three years of actually taking a loan, so we have closed on that even though we are still spending money from it. The next column is the estimated annual payment, that is our debt service. We will be paying, so for example, on the CWSRF O four loan, we'll be paying eighteen thousand dollars a year for twenty years on that. The IRD loan, we'll be paying a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. And the CWSRF O six loan, we'll be paying thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. If you go down to the very bottom, where it says total secured, you can see that we have secured twenty-four million dollars in funding. Of that funding, seven point seven four seven million is loan, sixteen point two five two million is grant. We have expended about thirteen, thirteen million dollars to date. We have approximately eleven million dollars left. And our annual, total annual estimated payment for these loans that we will be taking is two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year. Of that two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year, Town of Jay will be paying half of that. And Town of Littlemore Falls will be paying half of that, actually Littlemore Falls pays the entire amount and then they submit to Littlemore Falls for reimbursement for fifty percent of that, I mean to Jay for fifty percent of that. So, one little catch that you'll notice is we have different milestones here at the bottom. Milestone one was the original upgrade of fourteen million. We added in milestone two and three, that was three million dollars in cost. And then we've added in milestone four, for four point one five million. Total upgrade cost is twenty-one million one hundred and fifty thousand thirty-two dollars. Even though we have secured twenty-four million dollars in funding, we're gonna use some of that CBS, uh, two thousand twenty-three CBS money, the seven million dollars, will be used to pay back the loan portion of the two thousand twenty-three bill's O ninety-four loan and the CWSRF O seven loan. That is why we're not spending all twenty-four million, we're using some of that CBS grant money to pay down some of the loan money that we've taken. In other words, it'll turn the SRF loans into interim loans, we won't be paying any interest on those.
We used to call it reimbursement financing, where you're getting reimbursed for something you've already spent.
Yeah, the catch with the seven million dollars is we could only go back to October first of twenty-three to reimburse ourselves for those expenses, that's where those two loans, the O seven loan and the CWSRF loan. So, on the next page, I'm not gonna go through all this, it's there for you to look through if you have any questions or anything with it, it tells what milestone one included, what milestone number two included, milestone number three, and milestone number four. So, that is everything that we're doing at the wastewater treatment plant. One note that I will let you know, at the end of the paragraph for milestone four, it says, note that this milestone four is likely to be prioritized and shortened based on needs and funding availability. So, milestone four is a wish list, that we're going to try and get as much stuff done as we can that needs to be done, but we will not be going over the twenty-one million one hundred and five thousand and thirty-two dollar expenditure. So, if you go on and look at this, we're gonna be paying, the next paragraph basically shows that our debt service payment will be two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars a year. If we had not gotten the grant money, our annual debt service payment would have been, as is shown in the next paragraph down, one million two hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars a year. Instead, we're paying two hundred and forty-two thousand. We ended up with seventy-seven percent grant funding for this project. The loan portion is twenty-three percent. This is probably the number one funded project in the state of Maine.
Which I, if I remember correctly, that everybody viewed as quite exceptional.
Yes, yep. Many towns are very envious of our funding package.
Exceptional in a very good, positive way.
And, yes, yes, exactly. So, in closing, I'm always open to comments, questions, concerns, anything that you have or if anybody would like a tour of the facility. I'd really like to wait till it's done, but if you have any questions or wanna see something specifically now, and the question may be, when is it going to be done? The answer is going to be about two years from now. And the reason for that is, some of the materials that we need to install, we can't get our hands on readily, like the screw press that we are going to be installing. That is a ten to twelve month lag time on that, by the time we order it. And in order to order it, it has to be all approved, sized, spec, make sure all the electrical requirements, the floor loading capacities are all checked by the engineers. So, once they give their final approval, then we could order the wash press, which we have done at this point, but it's gonna be ten months out. So, even though this is an ongoing project, T-Buck will be down there this month working on parts of milestone number three, which is the retaining wall and fence line around there. Even though milestone number two has not been done, all of the equipment in milestone number two has to be ordered. So, it's looking like they will shut down for the winter time, possibly come back midsummer, install those three pieces of equipment in milestone two, and then likely shut down and come back for some of the stuff that we wanna do in milestone four. Estimates are, it's gonna be the end of twenty-six before this is completed, maybe into twenty-seven. But the work that is being done outdoors, the reason that the Foundry Road is closed, that will be done this fall. The only time it will be closed next year is when we actually do the paving and lowing and seeding around there. So, the big closure of Foundry Road, the end is near.
It's gonna open at the end of the year?
No, it should be open, yes, it should be open in about a month, it should be. And then they'll close again in the spring to do some paving and that sort of thing, but... Any questions?
Is there any issues with the seven million CDS funding?
No, there was, there was a little hiccup.
I know, it was kind of like new process and stuff.
Um, actually, it's going to be piggybacked on to the one point seven million dollar CDS, so we don't have to actually apply for the money, all over again, we just had to submit three or four different forms. So, we should be, as soon as that money is available, we should be able to start drawing on it.
That's good news.
The only thing is, the SRF program, who actually oversees the bill's O ninety-four loan, has asked that we actually expend all of the loan money through those programs and then make one application for CBS money to pay it in full at the end, at closing on the loan, so. But yeah, the money, the money is flowing, there was a little scale, like I said, a little hiccup. We're going to have to come up with a twenty-five percent match to the seven million. However, we worked with the funding agencies, found some loopholes and got through that. The good news is, actually, the bad news is, we're a disadvantaged community. The good news is, we're a disadvantaged community, so it was kind of a double-edged sword. Because of our unemployment, because of our median household income, because of our local economy with the mill closures and whatnot, we use that to our advantage so that we didn't have to borrow another two point seven million dollars. Maximizing that grant even further. Thank you, Carrie, she did a lot of work on that to make that happen. It's a great thing I come up with the ideas and she has to do the work.
Nice team.
Teamwork.
Thank you, Mark, no other questions?
One thing I'd like to mention, on a totally different subject, about a year and a half ago, I was in here and asked for a hundred and thirty thousand dollar expenditure for a new control panel for the centrifuge. Since that time, because we've had the new control panel in and operational, we have maximized what we can bring in for septic revenue. We have brought in a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in septic revenue, total. Of that hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eighty-four thousand of it went into the joint reserve account. Forty-nine thousand has gone into the J reserve account and thirty-five thousand going to Littlemore Falls. So, it was a worthwhile expenditure, even though it's gonna be used for a short period of time, we're making it worthwhile. We've done very well with the septic revenue, this month, this past month was our highest month to date where we made just over twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue, the septic intake.
Why do you, what do you mean by a short period of time, only use it for a short period of time?
Because once we get the screw press, we'll no longer need the centrifuge control panel, so it's actually going to be in use for about two and a half years. We would, we needed it anyway to de-water the sledge that we had. It's unfortunate that it was only gonna be a piece of equipment used for two and a half years, but I'm hoping that after the two and a half year period where it is still new and whatnot, I'm hoping the centrifuge manufacturer will purchase that back and sell to another community somewhere. So, I am working with them on that idea. So, we may be able to sell our centrifuge, as opposed to scrapping it, sell a centrifuge, they can recondition that and take this control panel and install it somewhere in a community that can't afford brand-new equipment, but may wanna install some rebuilt equipment, so keeping that option open.
You still, you predict, you estimate we'll be able to keep this rate up, is what you're talking about, coming in for the septic receive?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to, yes. You know, that is not all profit, that is revenue, we still have operating costs, but I make sure that our revenue more than offsets our operating cost by about a two to one factor. That's what I'm trying to do, trying to double our money, whatever we spend, we make twice as much, that's our profit margin. It's not really profit, but, you know, when you're, we're not making money down there, unfortunately, but it's helping offset future expenditures from the reserve account.
Thank you for the information.
Yep.
Up next, we have ATV, UTV, road access.
So, your folks asked me to check into the process for opening roads up to ATV, UTV vehicles. So, I did call DOT and was advised that, usually, it's unusual for a town to call, usually, it's an ATV club. We don't have an ATV club here in Littlemore Falls, I know there's one, the Bretton's Wheelers and I think there's one in Canton, I don't believe there's one in Jay, oh, there is one in Jay, okay, sorry, there is one in Jay. So, we really don't even have to go through that step, because usually, that's what it is. The ATV club says, you know, well, we'd like to ride on these roads, you know, for this distance, and then they bring it to you and then you request that of the state. So, you need to tell me what and where and how far and all that good stuff and then I can further that conversation with them.
I mean, personally, for me, I would like to, I would like to see this tableed so we can actually talk it out some more, I've reached out to a couple of people, I have not gotten any real feedback and I don't know what everybody else, but I would like to consider tabling it till we could actually reach out to more of the, not just our people that wanna ride, but, you know, other towns surrounding, I'd be curious if something we could do that would help connect trails from town to town is what I would like to look into. So, I personally would like some more time to discuss it and look into it. If, if everybody doesn't mind, I'd like to make a motion to table the ATV, UTV access for discussion. Second. All those in favor? Thank you for all the information, Carrie, I appreciate it, it was very helpful. I did, I read that part about the DOT, seriously, it's kind of strange, but... So, up next, we have the general assistance appendices.
So, we, you voted on this previously, we forgot to have the public hearing. It's the new minimums and guidelines, sorry, I can't find the right pile of papers here, for the maximums, you approve this every year, so I need somebody to make a motion to approve this retroactive to October first, please.
I make a motion, we approve the general assistance appendices retroactive to October first, twenty twenty-four. All of those in favor? Up next, we have...
I did have one question about the appendices thing. Is Andrus Goggin County intentionally left off of this because we're in Andrus Goggin County? This is like a comparison of other counties and, because Andrus Goggin County is not listed in any of this. We have Lewiston, Auburn, but the county itself is not included.
Right, well, we're under Lewiston, Auburn, if you look at the towns list.
You all set, Bruce?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have, up next, decision to accept the donation in the amount of fourteen hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
So...
Is there any conditions to that or is it just a donation?
It's just a straight-up donation, the patrons of Fish Meadow Cannabis had a donation jar out there for, again, for the Thanksgiving baskets and that's what they put in there, they brought it down to the office today, so.
That's awesome.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation from Fish Meadows Cannabis.
Their customers.
Their customers.
It's not the, it's not the store, it's the...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the donation of fourteen hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-four cents.
Uh, second, all those in favor? That's not the first time they've...
No, they did it last year as well.
It's a nice, it's a nice leading by example thing, that's, that's good. Alrighty. Up next, we have warrants, abatements, deeds and quitclaim. I would like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant, number forty-two, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-five cents, number forty-three, in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and eight cents, number forty-four, twenty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, general fund warrant, number twenty-six, one hundred sixty-one thousand thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents, twenty-seven, six thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, and number twenty-nine, one hundred ten thousand dollars fifty, one hundred ten fifty, one hundred ten thousand fifty-three dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Do we have no abatements or any of that, board discussion?
The only thing I would like to say, and it's only because of my night vision and now that we are in the dark, that I would like, everybody watching on TV and anyone reading the advertiser, that if they're gonna walk on places like Moose Hill Road or South Road or any dark road that doesn't have a lot of streetlights, wear something reflective or carry a flashlight. I almost picked off two people on my way here.
We did too.
And I mean, my lights were on high, but they were wearing dark brown and green and if one of them hadn't turned around and I hadn't seen the light in their face, I would have had a hood ornament. And people need to be aware that their safety is in their own hands.
Were they walking on the right side of the road?
They were walking on...
The opposite.
Yeah, they weren't coming towards or walking that way, on the other side, they were on the driver's side and, or the car's side and they were both wearing incredibly dark colors and, like I said, if that one had not turned around, it would have been a hood ornament. And my car couldn't take that. That's, that's all I have to share. I really don't wanna kill anyone on my way to serve the public. Boy, there is that too.
I know, I'd like to express my thanks to all the office staff there and everybody that worked in the poles yesterday, that, I was there for a part of the day and that was a lot, that was really intense watching everybody work.
It was crazy.
Very professional and courteous and patient and we are very lucky in this town to have the volunteers we have and the staff we have, because that's, that's a lot, be on your feet all day long, dealing with people, helping people, all the people you guys registered. It was, it was really good to see, we have a very good staff here.
They always go pretty busy at seven o'clock at night.
Yeah, it didn't seem like it's...
I'd go by, it's like, wow.
About seven-thirty, it seemed like it wound down. And then you were still registering people right up to the last minute.
Was it two minutes to eight we had someone come in?
Yeah. Wow, so that was really impressive. And that new sign that I finally noticed, after a year of it being up, had a tree fall on it, on one O six, when we had that last bad windstorm, that nice, pretty one, and it caught it and broke part of it. Now, now I notice it all the time, how that is broken. So, I, unfortunately, we're gonna have to look into that, I guess.
I would also like to take this opportunity, at least for the viewers, because I'm pretty sure that Ms. Harndon, being a modest woman, is not gonna include this in the advertiser, but to congratulate her on her awards for her media coverage and journalistic excellence.
That's true. I did note that myself.
Well, congratulations, I had not seen that, but I don't get online that much, so.
It was on the front page of the advertiser.
I...
He doesn't read paper either.
Since, since Pis has been closed, or well, Rusty Lannard, I never get to pick up any of the papers, so. We're waiting for him, so I can read the paper and not pay for it again, we'll get him there.
I know this week, I was shocked when I come up past Shai Corner and my boy goes, dad, it's twenty-five. I said, what are you talking about? The speed limit had changed from thirty-five to twenty-five.
Oh, wow.
And there's like no sign ahead of it or on the other, on the other end that says reduce speed. It's just, we've done this for how long, has that been thirty-five? Forever, right, I mean, when we were growing up, when we went to school, it was thirty-five.
This sounds like a confession, should we be writing a...
No, but my point is, is that all these people, it's just, they're still going thirty-five or whatever and it's just... I'm sure that's the state and the state really needs to put something out there that says, like, if they change the patent of how you're driving, they're gonna put a sign up there and they're gonna, like they did on Bean's Corner or whatever, that's all, you know, whatever, that was a lot. But if they change a patent or they put an island in, the state will put something up that will say, change, you know, they should put something there that says, you know, reduce speed ahead. Because when you come around that corner and down over, where it was thirty-five on bottom of old high school hill, I mean, most people are just gonna step right on it and go, well, no, that's now twenty-five. So, I think they need to, I don't know if we've checked that, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but...
I haven't had a chance to yet.
I know, I hope I see the lady that did the ditches and stuff, because I like to have a conversation, because I think they should do something. Is that, did that change because of the village area or...
I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna say it wasn't me, I've already had a crap for it from many other people, but it was, it was, somebody requested, you know, maybe slowing it down through there, so I asked Carrie to ask DOT and they changed, they didn't say when they, they said when they're gonna change it, they just kind of changed it.
Right, well, that's, well, that's how that works, but I guess my point, and if that's the village area, can we get like a sign like Wayne has that says village area had? Or something that, you know, says it's thirty miles an hour and it's got the flashing thing and it tells you to slow down? Because I know even at like five, five or four or five in the morning going to Winthrop, I go through Wayne and there could be five cars and we're all in a row and you see everybody slow right down and there's nobody around, there's no, nobody's open or anything. I think it's a good idea because it's a residential area and people should go slow, but there's gotta be a little pre-warning there. but there's got to be a little pre-warning there.
Yeah, I think you have to put a feeling of dropping.
So, I know that flashing sign gets me every time in Wayne, so it tells me I'm going too fast. I'm going one over the speed limit, so give me a break.
Especially if we're designating it as a village area and it's on one thirty-three. This week, I think.
I go to the dump, come back, and everything moves. We'll figure it out.
I'd hate to be the first one to get a ticket.
I know, I already got the evil eye out of a company. I'm like, "It's all right, you can slow down. It's not going to kill you."
That's true.
So, all right. That a board discussion? Do we don't really have any department? You want department reports?
No, it's the second meeting of the month, not the first. I have a request of the board. I would like to have any sewer committee meeting sometime in the future, and we don't have a sewer committee chosen. The members that we had are no longer on the board.
I'm on the committee.
You are on the committee?
We are, yes. Both of us. You told us we wouldn't be meeting for six months.
You're asking me?
Well, I asked you if I could ask for a sewer committee. You said, "Yes," now we already got one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We've been wondering why we haven't met.
And when would you like this meeting?
I will talk with Carrie, and we will get one scheduled, because we have a few decisions to make on milestone four.
My question is, do we have to bring donuts? Sure.
Do we, do we have to bring donuts?
Thanks, Bruce.
My readers.
I would think they would be provided.
No, that's taxpayer money.
No, it's Mark's money.
You're right, you're right. I will pay you. I will bring donuts. There we go. Thank you.
No, you've got a committee.
Jim and I are...
In, in April, we redid the committees when we had the election, the first meeting after that.
And it was Jim and I that did the tour.
Yes.
We actually volunteered.
I remember, I remember the tour very well. Carrie pulled me out of the mud.
That wasn't mud.
I was trying to be...
On that note, town manager report?
How do you follow sludge?
I just wanted to echo what, uh, what Will already said yesterday, with a very, very, very long day, but, um, everybody was just very patient and very gracious. Um, we did have one thousand, four hundred, forty-three people cast ballots yesterday.
Wow.
I don't, I don't have the count, please don't ask me. But, um, yeah, it was, uh, it was, it was good.
Yep. So, I can't ask you how many registered voters there are?
No, no. I do know they registered seventy-three people.
I'm asking how many come over, they tell you?
I don't, I'm not sure. They were a number. As I said, there were seventy-three new registered voters he, just yesterday. And there was, um, Tammy was just, she never got away from the table between address changes and name changes and, and the new voter registrations. We had to come back twice to get, uh, more voter registration cards.
That's great.
And everybody was so patient, you know, because we had to wait for booths to become available, and they, they were, they didn't complain about having to wait or...
No, even the citizens.
I think they recognized this was important.
Well, I didn't notice anybody being unpoli, non-polite. I mean, everybody was, they didn't like what they heard, they just moved along, and it seemed like, from what I could see, it was, it was, it was really good. Considering that there was all these warnings about how it could turn out, I thought it was amazing. Just busy.
I know, the way they were talking reflected a SWAT team.
Yeah, well...
We had a few people come before eight o'clock, and we told them, you know, we didn't open until eight, and they were fine.
Yeah, it was...
They were back in line waiting at eight o'clock, so...
Yeah, I, I would like to have a count of the for and against for the warrant articles at some point, if it's not on the website or wherever already.
Yeah, yeah.
No guarantee I didn't see it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know it's not on the website, because I, I didn't, I wasn't here today, I was at that workshop, so I didn't get a chance to put that up.
If you can just send it out some...
Yeah.
Just to get an idea.
Awesome. Public comment? Do we have any?
I just really quick. I'm Dana Cummings, um, Deep LLC, Sugar Kush. I just wanted to, so you guys two have put a face to the name, and if you ever want to get ahold of me, want to walk through or something like that, happy to share. I know, um, there was some confusion, um, at the meeting that, in August, and, uh, and we get it all resolved, and the board of appeals approved it, but anyway. I just want to let you guys know, you, I'm always willing to talk and, and communicate in any way you guys want, so... Feel free to reach out or through Carrie, I can give you my number wherever you want, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dana. Seeing no other public comment? We have no executive session?
I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor? Uh, sec, sorry, second?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Not in a hurry.
You did well.
Everybody, yeah.
Meeting adjourned.